Let's get started, guys. Come on. Glenn, do you have anything to present?
I have some topics to bring up regarding this bounty you had that Bobby Charles claimed. How much was it?
Five hundred thousand.
Okay. Do you agree with that? He claimed this bounty? Is this correct?
I kinda don't wanna pay him because I'm pretty confident he's gonna pay, he's gonna give the money to Chang Gang, people who did the terrorism.
Yeah, I've been saying, you know, making the reward more than the fines was not necessar- not necessarily the greatest.
I didn't think anyone would, would do it. They're all fucking terrified of those motherfuckers.
Is, is that not wild? Five hundred thousand dollars and nobody was willing to turn, turn them in?
It is crazy.
I don't think it sets a great example for retroactively changing the rules, but going forward, I do think we perhaps should have a real system in place regarding bounties.
Good idea.
Sounds a great idea.
But it was in a state of emergency at the time, so I'm gonna fulfill this.
Okay.
Cool. Great.
But I think going forward, no more random bounties. We, we come up with legislation.
Awesome.
Okay.
Perfect. Easy solved.
All right, what else you got?
I, I only have one more thing. Did anybody talk to someone named Bo Babacock about the Pride event that's ongoing?
Yeah, uh, the last treasurer was actually, uh, handling that before he got shot in the head and died.
I'm gonna talk to you guys after this, just because if you talk to him, et cetera, I'm probably gonna pay him though. It's about seven hundred K.
That's around what we paid Andy.
Yeah.
That's for the whole month of events?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot of events, yeah. It's ten different events times two, because they, two different shifts. It's a whole thing, yeah.
That sounds almost like, honestly, like, very reasonable. Like, you could probably even throw a million for the month of events, like, you know what I'm saying? So that seven hundred is like-
Like, they're doing their own raffles and stuff, and I'm not gonna fund that. I'm not funding that. I'm just gonna fund the actual staff and the artists and stuff. And I'll talk to you guys after, those of you who have actually talked to them, just to make sure, and I think I'll just do that.
Okay.
Okay, that's it for me, basically.
Murphy.
So yesterday, we started to talk about the DOC stuff, you know, concerns, some of which I share about it. Crane brought up that whether or not there's a DOC is sort of like a whole thing. So let's get past that for now. The other thing was like the food relief thing, which I don't think there's an urgent situation now, but we could still talk about the concept of that. First, I'll just get into the most recent thing I put, which was the, sort of the mediator thing. You know, there's a lot of government employees at a lot of different positions, you know, ranks within government. We are often put at adversarial positions from one another, even within departments, to have an effect on other people and morale of departments and government as a whole. So I like the idea of like a third-party sort of mediator system where people who are affected by some certain shit could compel some people to work out their shit, get back to business. We all are part of one giant team, even though we're sometimes at odds. Sometimes those things affect everyone. I just think that's a good opportunity for someone who excels at conflict resolution and de-escalation to have something to do besides be a therapist and listen to someone bitch and complain. HR without calling it HR-
Listening to people bitch and complain?
I'm like, this, this sound a lot like-
This isn't, this isn't I report you, you report me kind of thing. This is a third-party thing. This is like, these two people are fucking- It's like, it's for other people to identify conflicts, you know, on a whistleblower level and be like, look, I can't stand this anymore. Someone's gotta do something about this. It's like that kind of shit. It's not like weaponizing against each other. Like, like, if you're in a conflict, you don't report to other person in the conflict. It's like, it's about how it affects other people.
Why can't people just request mediation on the docket? I don't know, some have in the past.
We've offered this in the past. I've done it in the past. I like the idea of having mediators, because I think it's good, but I've always struggled personally with trying to implement it. My sort of realization, every time I've tried to implement mediators, is that it's hard to fit someone into the right sort of box so that they could handle like everyone's problems, because to be a mediator, you either need to be like an expert in your field or just a good negotiator, right?
Yeah.
How to lay that out proper. I'm willing to give anything a shot. Uh, just be aware that it is unlikely that any new roles will be added to the government payroll. They can be paid like on a contract basis and record their like sessions and then go to the treasurer.
That's what it says in my thing here.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just, yeah, there will be no like signing in or whatever.
It's a part-time, per, per DM, per contract, uh, piecework situation. That's what's outlined in the thing.
Okay.
So it's like, it's literally, it's, it's retrofitted to not be essential in the event that it is not supported.
Okay.
I'm not worried to vote on this right away. I have left it in there that there's veto power for the mayor or the chief justice for certain obvious reasons, kind of conflict that is not appropriate for this measure, and there are better measures, et cetera. You get what I'm saying?
Yeah, of course, yeah.
I'm good with me.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
If you wanna go for a vote, I'd be happy to.
Y'all good with it?
It's city council report ID 7336. Okay, I think it's perfect. The language you added for both binding and non-binding arbitration depending on circumstances, that's fine. Perfect.
All right, so how do y'all, how do y'all feel about it?
Any neers?
Any knee sayers?
I say yay.
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 Unanimous. Woo.
All right, so food relief bill?
I don't think it's necessary anymore.
I don't think it's necessary anymore.
In certain times?
No.
Uh, still hosting Agcon on, when did I say it was? June 24th to bring all of the farmers and booth owners together just to, so they can all meet and kind of figure out their troubles together. You know, it's a good time for them to share best practices, et cetera, et cetera.
Before I yield my time, since I don't have any other legislation, I do need to get emphatic with the chief justice for a moment. You're making some moves. Are they happening soon?
What?
DOJ stuff?
What move?
You said, you said you were shaking things up. You, you said that at every other meeting.
Fire Solomon. He ducked out of his only fucking court case.
He is fired.
He's not, he, he's not- Yeah, he's not bar certified.
Yeah, I, I, I know. I brought it up because it was funny, because I hate him.
Uh, my primary focus right now is the figuring out our jurisdiction and all that.
Okay, that's all I need to clarify, because I've been kind of waiting on like housekeeping stuff to kind of even focus on like law school and all that. So I'll just, I'll just start working on that at an accelerated pace. Um, I think that does it for me.
All right, Alan Crane.
Only shit I got is the stuff we were talking about as a group, which is, you know, defining things and all that. My basic belief is that we should issue, not change any language, but issue an advisory clarifying why everything says Los Santos.
Okay, uh, can you write that up?
Yeah, I can do.
You're the wordsmith. Philippa Cantor.
We were going to bring up, uh, me and Cornwood, I believe this was brought to him. Filming within the hospital became an issue really quickly. I know, uh, we stated that you can film within public area and technically the hospital building is state-owned, so, uh, it is public in that regard, but there's also, you know, a level of privacy to be had with the, uh, medical of it, and since, um, we are federally contracted, we can trespass, so it's a little complicated. The argument kind of came up when Tugs was trying to film Aziz Sultan's dead body as it was in the hospital. So if we want to maybe make an amendment to that, that filming within, uh, government property might, should not be completely free, maybe?
That's sort of segue's into legislation I have.
Oh, yeah, you said, uh, you said first was working on it already.
First worked on it, yep.
Yeah, that works then. That's the second part of this. Uh, so yes, well, we'll see if that fits the one that first wrote up, but this is something I had to bring up because, uh, because yes, we can't really have Tugs filming corpses in there again, as well as just the fact, you know, people have a, we don't have HIPAA or anything, right? I'm a strong, uh-
PIPA, not HIPAA.
We have PIPA, not HIPAA. Uh, I'm fuck HIPAA. We don't want that for so many reasons, but that doesn't mean people should have cameras in their face when they're dying.
Dude, why is little Tug such a little fucking creep?
He is a little bitch. He is such a creep, he really is.
He's always filming everything, bro.
You should get Rattender.
Yeah, yeah, he's, he is a little bitch. Holy fuck. You're not wrong. You're not wrong.
Fucking boy air, dude.
Props to, uh, never tell him I said this, because I, I have a rivalry with this motherfucker, but props to Mason Dixie who tried to take him to court for filming in there. I don't think it went well, because there is really no precedent for it not being okay, but he tried, and he's the one who brought it to me. There's that one. Then I was gonna bring up the new cameras that are just everywhere, because someone tried to put that on the hospital, which is a crazy place for it, because I can see all the cops coming in and out, and when the mess are there, and if someone, if their boys are there to be broken out or something like that.
Yeah, there's one right outside my house.
That's, that's crazy, man. And then Hornwood, kind of a question for how y'all, I want to handle this, since you're now both High Command as well as PD liaison. We have an issue with the fact that our ICU is still not functional. We are still unable to check people in. The doctor there just refuses to work. If a patient wakes up, they can just leave. He'll, he'll just let them out, no matter what. If a patient's in PD custody, we have two options. We either, uh, tell the cops they have to put out a warrant. We can't hold them there, or they have to be sent up to the prison. The general way we've been doing it is the first way, except in cases like Ellie Fletch, who was going up for a huts, so we just said, just send her up.
Just make sure that that gets funneled to Crane and he can have an indefinite warrant put out. That's usually how judges have handled that.
Yeah.
If someone did.
Okay.
That sounds like the best way to do it.
Okay. I know some cops are, are concerned about the, the warrant portion, but, um, we had cops kind of push back on why we can't hold them there, and, and to be frank, the why is just, just we can't. We would love to, uh, but we can't, so.
Yeah, I mean, you don't really have the, you know, you don't have the power to do so.
Yeah, no. So, yeah, that's perfectly fine with me.
Like, they wake up and then they just kind of walk out?
See, you know how way back in the day, when you'd ICU, um, you know, the, the doctors would, would keep an eye on you, the orderlies would keep you in the, in the bed there and everything? Now, they don't stop you from leaving if you're not checked in. If you wake up in there and the orderlies, I wanna let you out, if that door's not locked, you can walk out and go wherever the hell you want. We don't get informed by the orderlies if someone wakes up. Actually don't know. That's how we don't know if Solomon was out of the ICU. Now, of course, of course we do, but, uh, that's how we didn't know. Uh, it's not ideal. Hopefully, we have that one day. If we write legislation, that legislation will just be defunct. All right, thank you, Crane. Appreciate it. That's my things I wanted to bring up since, uh, since you've got the legislation on the cameras, so fucking go for it.
Siobhan.
Citizen Council Report 7480. Uh, I had some other stuff working in here. Whoops. Uh, don't mind the draft? That was just kidding. Okay.
What was, what was the, uh?
Well, in the Bill of Human Privileges that we can't, police officers in a multinational conflict, but as somebody pointed out, there's nothing about civilians, so I was gonna force civilians to register for less selective service when they turn nineteen. AKA Lil Tugs, bitch.
Saying between the ages of nineteen and twenty.
Right, well, you know, we'll just hold that thought. Okay, so Pete Protection Act, making it illegal to place cameras in public locations for filming of individuals without their knowledge. All cameras that are placed are to be easily identified and assigned needs to be placed on the building entrances, alerting individuals the fact of monitoring.
Didn't, wasn't there something else that specifically said that it's not illegal to film in public places?
That's the Bill of Human Privileges, but that was like, that was like you take out a camera or your phone and film things. It wasn't like you put a camera on a wall that people don't know are there. And it's always surveying, you know?
Somebody walks in with a news camera, it's very obvious that they're being filmed, and they know that, and their behavior might then change. They have, but there's, that opportunity for it's publicly viewable goes both ways. They're able to publicly view that they're being recorded.
That's a good reason to pass something like this, however, it's not articulated in the document.
Thought it mattered in discussion. I wanted to spitball. It's not finished per se. They probably, it should be articulated in here. I just copy and paste it. I just copy-paste it exactly what first provided me.
Yeah, uh, the, the reason you just gave is a good articulation as to why these cameras should be regulated. So let's just talk about this next week.
We'll write it up, but it's on the, it's on the works. Just more, the other thing was just more of a, a heads up that we're doing this. Um, I think I said this yesterday, which is lit, but it's written out here. The Thank You Project. To acknowledge, unsung here is about the city, whether it's sanitation, EMS, or whatever. Andy is throwing a recognition dinner, um, and we are going to be grabbing people. We need about, what'd you say? I think like fifteen to twenty people to participate. Since we're not being recorded, I can spoil this. It's a murder mystery dinner. It's gonna be really fun. Andy is doing a series, and it's gonna be super fun. I'm really excited. Yeah. Bobby should probably be included. Wait, is Bobby our real hero of Los Santos? I don't think he is.
He is.
Okay, fine. Include him. What the fuck?
Look at that nine-one-one.
One-nine-one-one.
Vaughn are being held up by four masked individuals with guns. I'm hiding in a bush.
I'm not being held up.
I'll, I'll, I'll bet you a hundred dollars.
Wait, are you guys all on duty as cops right now?
You, you better fucking believe I am, bruh. Jesus Christ.
Come on, Dre, join us.
These streets be wildin'.
That's a police state.
Yeah, I need to stay fucking plugged into the radio all the time.
We're Ocean King. Ignore us. You might wanna show some degree of a show of force to that anonymous number one.
The hell was it?
In order for them to know that-
Why?
Is this-
If y'all show up, then they're like, okay, they don't know where they are.
Fucking basement, having a meeting, and you guys are gonna be paid four thousand dollars an hour.
So there should be-
Bro, I'd be making even more money if I was the mayor.
Yeah, he'd be making even more.
You, you know what it has to do with anything right now? Is that if any of you guys were working normal civilian jobs or doing illicit activities, even at three thousand five hundred dollars an hour, you are making less than someone out there doing that shit.
Yeah. Oh, on that topic, the fucking council pay still hasn't gone up.
Anyway, so important to know is by having this three-hundred-five-hundred-dollar-an-hour thing, we're actually saving the state money.
How is that possible?
Because-
Opportunity cost. Opportunity cost, Glenn.
So by paying the police more, we're saving money.
Yeah, they'll stop going off duty and working grime and making eleven thousand dollars an hour.
Look, I don't give a fuck about the pay. I just care about the protection right now.
I like that police are paid to protect me, because I'm particularly in danger right now. Not that anybody cares.
I care, dude. I'll fucking kill anyone who presses you.
People care more and less than others.
Talk about it, but I, I do care. I, I hope that doesn't happen to you.
Uh, we can't lose another council member.
I will happen.
If someone presses you, I got the Glock, and I ain't afraid to go on the clock.
I'll try to make it as long as I possibly can, but I will get caught lacking at some point. It's gonna happen.
Just don't get caught.
There's fucking too many of them. There'll be someone I don't recognize. I'll be fucking careful.
Hey, hey, here's, here's what happens, okay? You're driving a car, someone rolls up to you, they're like, hey, who is this? And then you shoot him. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. No, basically, if I'm out, like, if someone says my name, basically pull out my gun.
Yeah.
Don't fucking say my name, dog.
Cornwood, you got anything to present?
Fortunately, I have a shit ton of shit. Okay, so stolen firearm, firearms are run rampant and they're hard to track. So this is something that was brought up to me by like three different officers at separate times throughout the course of the last couple of weeks. The notes are, when we charge someone with a firearm that doesn't belong to them, if the civilian only reports one firearm stolen, civilian is now brought in for questioning because they didn't report the firearm stolen. But they did, they just didn't report that specific one, because they don't know which one that they had stolen, because they had more than one firearm. Tracking serials of the guns during firearm training would apply to the first gun and not the other guns as well. Is there anything else that we can do legally to help keep track of these stolen firearms? Because people will report a firearm stolen, but they might not have, uh, anything other than, you know, just saying, hey, I had a firearm stolen, and they had another one stolen, or they have one firearm stolen, they sell another one.
Like we used to do with class twos.
That's what I wanted to suggest, but I was told in the past that we said no to mandating registration during the first term.
Say about mandated registration in the first term? I don't recall that. I mean, I remember, like, we discussed it briefly, but I don't remember what the details were right now.
Well, like MDT profiles?
Like we used to do with class twos, like how we used to mandate registration on class twos.
Like, I, I, I understand why you wouldn't want to-
You don't get your firearm registered, you get fucked.
I, I understand why you wouldn't wanna do that, because, I mean, shit, at this point, it's like, holy hell. You know, how, how many hoops you had to jump through to get a damn gun to protect yourself? But at the same time, you know, a good guy with a gun is gonna be willing to do that shit.
As a new firm, I support a firearms registry.
People who are careless with guns shouldn't have them, because they just end up eating the streets free guns.
That there's a simpler solution, which is when you find someone who has so many guns that they don't even know which one got stolen, that maybe you should just bring that to a judge and say this person's like not a responsible firearm owner. So I would just, I would just bring it to judges, to be honest.
Okay. Wait, I'm confused, guys. This is very interesting. Where is it written in the constitution that says judges can take away firearms licenses if they do this?
Are you kidding?
I'm pretty sure it does somewhere.
No, I, I think it does, actually. I think it's-
Probable cause is the phrasing that we use.
I'm confused. What's probable cause? What's probable cause? Where'd that come from?
He's doing a bit, guys. He's doing soze. Hey, where'd that come from, anyway?
Uh, I had like Cohen Riker, like, like three or four officers ask me about that.
Hmm.
Seriously?
Love Riker. I'm a Riker stan.
Uh-huh. The other one was, uh, seized money. So this is something that we talked about months ago.
Article four of the, of the constitution, Article four licenses, it's only Judge and Clerk's grant licenses and revoking of licenses. It's literally written there. Wow.
Yeah, but, but it's not written, yeah, but it's not written, though.
It's not. It's called implied powers and judicial discretion.
Yeah, what's implied powers? It's just not written.
Red hearts and a round match.
I'm confused. I'm confused. I'm confused.
I hate this. I hate this.
Honestly, I think I'm cooking you right now. I think you're getting cooked right now, bro. I think you're getting fucking cooked. You are getting so cooked right now.
Third grader.
What about the money, Cornwood?
So seize money. Uh, we talked about this like two, three months ago. It was like a maybe, let's throw it up there. We're down the road a little bit.
What if we put that money in a washing machine to clean it?
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that sounds good to me.
He's cooking. He's cooking. I doesn't like anything, but just destroy it.
No.
What if we were alone enough?
Whoa, 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 whoa. My dollar bills survive time in the fucking washing machine, and I forgot to take them out of my jeans all the time. They don't get destroyed. They-
Yeah, I don't know. Uh, if we can figure out what to do with the money, then.
But I mean, is that something that we would do, or is that not something we just, you know, give to the state and send to like the federal bank or whatever?
Federal bank won't, what people are calling dirty?
We can ask, but I do not think that's gonna be entertained.
Okay. The actual reasoning would be, it's nothing more than, you know, civil asset seizure, and then that money is just sitting there to rot inside our evidence lockers.
What if we just sell it to people?
I've never sold the Saints dirty money.
People buy that shit, right? Like-
I mean, maybe, but I mean-
They do.
Do they?
What if we like, we chart, like, charge them slightly less for it? Like, maybe not one-to-one, because they'll have to take off the rubber bands?
Can't you like pay CI's with the, with that shit?
Pay CI's with dirty money. Here, do more crime. Go.
To be honest with you, that probably is the most, because it's gotta be, you gotta treat it not as tender. You gotta treat it as like, hey, we're like doing, I'm bartering. Here's some gold, and, you know, you give me that shit, I don't know, that rock that's really big.
I mean, I feel like if, if we can articulate it proper, then, then we can make a pretty reasonable case.
It's not illegal. It's not. So why don't, why don't we just take the money and then sell it?
That's probably the, the best idea. But it, it is, wh- what if at some point we are able to establish an it is or something, and then we're, then we've done a major money laundering operation?
The problem with selling it-
Yeah.
Is that we know how people, you know, get the money out of the country or get it clean. And it involves, you know, more illegal shit.
Wait, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's been a whole dossier provided to the judges by PD about money laundering.
Yeah, there was like-
Wait, was that the fucking, the Suarez one?
What a shame.
The Suarez, Lenny, Declan, goldman shit.
Yeah, what if we just don't do that illegal stuff, though, right?
I mean-
What I'm saying is if we're selling it to someone else, we know what they're gonna do with it, so then we're effectively just creating crime.
What if like, what, what?
There's another way to do it, and we don't know.
What if we pool all of our money together and then put rubber bands around them? This is interesting. This is interesting. This is, I'm confused. Okay, um-
Oh, no. When he says he's confused, he's not confused. He's just gonna make a facetious point.
Yeah.
Isn't, isn't, isn't the money-
Just let him be fascist or whatever.
Wait, 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 wait. Hold on, hold on.
Said it.
Isn't, isn't it innocent until proven guilty? You know, can we really assume that these people are gonna launder the money if we sell it to them?
You know what? You ain't wrong. I mean, they might just sit on that shit and not do nothing.
Sell it to somebody else to launder it.
Oh, wow. So it's second-hand treatment. Okay.
That sounds like a bad idea.
The hell do you know, Glenn?
God.
Damn it. Go to hell, Glenn.
Hire someone to start a shell company that's a broker for this stuff and then just sell directly to them.
Fishing company.
I, I think we table this for now. I, but for the record, I do say that I like the idea of this money that would otherwise be sitting in the void being used to, uh, better the state.
I am not convinced that we are going to be authorized to do something with the money. There's a very, very simple reason why we do not, you know, incentivize police action like that directly, and that's because it creates conflicts of interest between their ethics and their, you know, outcome.
Yeah, I mean, the, the state did have a fifteen percent bonus for people that build people, though.
Right, and that was done away with.
Yep, as compensation for the ability to directly adjust their pay.
Right, so, but what I'm pointing out is that when we talk about, you know, the idea of, well, and also people never stack charges to bill higher because they knew they get fired for it.
Mm-hmm.
The point is, though, is that it is very easy to take, you know, a gray area decision about should this money be seized and can, maybe would I win in court, would I not? Maybe it's sixty, forty on the cop side. But because it's only sixty, forty, the cop normally wouldn't take it, but now if we got a policy where all the money they seize, you know, becomes PD funds, then, well, that sixty, forty decision sounds a lot easier, right? So I don't, I don't know if I like that.
What if, all right, now hear me out. We seize this money and we have the police use it to buy those one-point-three-million-dollar interceptors?
Hmm.
Right? And it, and it pisses off John Federal Government so much that he comes to Los Santos, and we get that stupid motherfucker in a headlock, and we say, what are the fucking boundaries? What are, what are the, what's the fucking territory?
Please, yes.
We fucking, we kidnapped that motherfucker and we get him to write up some shit.
You know-
I can't support kidnapping. That's wrong.
I love you, Glenn.
What the hell do you know, Glenn? Hi, when I get Derek Shaw, like, I'll hold him up too, and I'll call you next door.
Here's my idea. We flipped it, if we flip all this money once, then we make that shit illegal, seize it back and flip it again.
Okay. Now we're cooking. Let's go. Let's go.
That's, that's literally what the community did.
Yeah.
All right, in all seriousness, I'm, I'm cool with waiting for a decision, and Alan's right, they probably will say that, because they have no actual grasp or concept of what goes on in Los Santos.
True.
Oops. Um, all right, what else, Cornwood?
Oh, the robbery and the petty, this is for you, Chief Justice Crane. Uh, the robbery and the petty robbery charge, very similar in times fines and, I, I don't, if you just wanna take a look at that real quick.
Okay.
Is there, is, do you wanna lead that way, or is that intended?
The cops were confused about it.
I would, hold on.
Okay. Well, I'll take a brief moment to talk about, uh, in the holding Derek Shaw up thing. Uh, after, after months, he finally responded, uh, and agreed to let us, uh, promote a third attending. So everyone congratulate Ron Wilson if you see him. Thank God I can help.
Why don't you just do a coup and throw that guy out?
Derek, you throw a guy out who, uh-
Never shows up.
Yeah.
Dude, let's just talk to John Federal Government.
Let's do it. Let's go.
Hey, well, let's raise our concerns.
I know him.
Well, do we have anything else? Anything? Yeah, 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 yeah. No, no one's surprised. No one's surprised, Max.
What the hell?
Yeah, you do it all for me. You're a legislator now.
Wait, you could actually contribute. You could not rely on me to do all the big-
No, I'm glad that you do it. Man, I was like fucking Thomas Jefferson, except I didn't own any slaves, like drafted up that Bill of Human Privilege. I was, I was in a candlelit room with a fucking quill and a pot of ink, and I, man, I fucking, I was like, mm, yeah.
Hold on. Do I have to fire Derek Shaw two weeks before the election? That, that motherfucker's name.
Hey, wait, where was the, uh, what was the mask mandate? What was the new mask mandate report number? What was it called?
Wait, we don't have a mask mandate, do we?
The Mask Mandate Redux, uh, two-four-three.
That's right, the Redux one, that's right.
I'm cool with like a mask mandate, just because all these motherfucking wannabe gangbanger pussies all look the same, dude.
Yeah, exactly.
Because they all wear the same fucking mask. It's fucking boring. It's lame. Uh, they, they lack the vibrancy that Los Santos truly embodies.
Yeah, no, I agree. Shit. So about the mask mandate, it was, it says, "Public access locations shall be defined as any government building, police station, state-owned business, or public park." Would this include a gas station, the parking lot of a gas station where you actually pump the gas?
No, I don't think so.
But it would include the gas station.
What was written? Did it say gas station?
It says state-owned business, but is that considered?
It is not intended to be gas station.
Okay. I had an officer try and get someone's masks off. I told him, I don't think you can do that here, and he said you can because of this. I just wanna clarify, so I didn't let him know. Government employee for lawyers. We talk about the, yeah, treating lawyers as a government employee. We had a situation yesterday where we had a lawyer get held up. He was unlawfully imprisoned at the jail, and we need to fix the definition of that to say that lawyers are government employees in all state-owned buildings instead of just the MRPD and the City Hall. Because, because currently it excludes the sheriff's office, it excludes the jail, anywhere else where they might be doing their work.
All right, I think we're done, right?
Do we have any updates, uh, from Arthur Mcnee? Mcnee? Crane? Did Mcnee say he's gonna take the impeachment case?
I haven't talked to him.
Okay, well, backup plan. I asked Jackie Snow, and he said yes.
Oh.
Okay.
Have fun.
Okay.
Uh, I have one thing instead.
I have one last thing.
We're gonna meet with him today.
Corn, Corn, Corn was it done? That's my bad.
Yeah, sorry, sorry.
Sorry, there's a lot of shit. We haven't had a meeting in like four weeks, so.
It's true. True.
My last point, I believe this, this is the only place that I could think to bring it up. Class two firearms for the police department.
You're wrong. You're bargaining up the wrong tree, buddy.
Yeah.
Where, where can-
You're High Command, sir.
Yeah, but where can we go to, to bring this up? Because everybody else did bring it up at the council meeting.
High Command, sir.
That John Satan individual.
Are you telling me that you asked in High Command, and they said bring it up at a council meeting?
Yes.
Who?
I don't even remember, because I wrote this so long ago.
Uh, well, then you should double check on that.
As the commissioner of police, it is with great pleasure that I will say, I don't know.
Oh, okay.
Okay, well, we're gonna figure that out.
Look, maybe we could work out like a contract with ammunition or some shit. Like, if we start seeing motherfuckers on the street with like Uzis and stuff, bro, maybe it's time to bust out the shotguns, dog.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, we've seen, we've seen the Glockatron. We've seen that M, M four-two-nine.
Well, yeah, I mean, Soze had that from back in the day, right? And the Glockatron, Glockatron, while good, is still, uh, pretty sure it's still semi-automatic.
The, the problem is, it's not about a one-to-one situation. Like, we've gotten to the point where there's been multiple large-scale shootouts in majorly disadvantageous situations. So like, look at the City Hall shooting from, from a couple of days ago, or the, the whole terrorism that happened, or from a couple of weeks ago, and then the terrorism that happened after that with the, uh, with the trial.
I got a question.
I mean, yeah.
Are you able to use those illegal gun mods on police guns?
No, and yes, I have tried.[1730.61]
Have you tried? Okay.
Yes.
Cause that would have been my suggestion. Like, why, why the fuck not just not use them, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, that's, that's what I thought. I mean, shit, I'm, I'm about to pull out the damn M four two nine. I mean, give me thirty days, that shit's mine.
No, you're not.
No.
I mean, like, we, we can talk about it in thirty days. You know what I'm saying?
In, in relation to what was just mentioned, I remembered, I was telling Siobhan this, but I'm going to be doing testing with the PD. Uh, on these new joints that are popping up there. Now that they've shipped in rolling paper intended for it. And, uh, I don't have to awkwardly use a cigarette that's already filled, uh, that still has nicotine in. Now I can actually see, it's my luck. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna help them. Exactly. I'm gonna help them with that. Uh, if my results change in regards to scheduling, I will bring that here.
That Ron Oil can import rolling paper.
Shit.
Where's the law on importing?
Ship it out. Get it the fuck out of here.
It's not written.
It's not written. It's true.
Sorry, go on.
Red hearts and a round.[1595.88]